Okay, you're all.
Good morning, all. Welcome to the Tourism Committee meeting, February 25. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of January 25. Mr. Strau. Somebody else out there want to second it?
I'll second it.
Ms. Runyon, right? Thank you for seconding it. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Posed? All right, so move. Before we go into the agenda for tourism, treasurer asked that he have some time. He's on the occupancy tax side of the meeting, but he will not be here. And I see Dennis is up top, and if you don't mind, he'd like to just give his report. So he can leave, and he's got some meetings with some bankers about money. So if that's okay.
I have no objection, Gene.
All right, thank you, Dennis. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I passed out a report to the people here in the room. What I will do when I get back to my office is I will email this information to all the supervisors. So you. We've got some, what I consider to be astonishingly, astonishingly good news. Revenue collected as of the 17th of this month for fiscal 2021 is $6,722,000. That's an increase of 61% over what was collected in 2020, and 39 and a half percent over what was collected in 2019. And I want to add to that, that since the 17th, we have had almost $100,000 more money come in. We're having trouble keeping up with it. It's coming in so fast.
That's great.
Yeah, I can't believe it. And on the other side, I just want to talk briefly about short-term rentals. I have a, there's a second page which will be going out to all the supervisors that shows how much money was collected from short-term rentals for each town in fiscal 2020. And the total is $567,000. We have a total of 920 parcels, properties registered to collect occupancy tax. 670 of those are short-term rentals. And now, as far as the Granicus contract, we have just finally ironed out all the problems we were having, and did our first download Tuesday. And we're right now sifting through the information to weed out any that may have already been registered, and to separate it into towns, we're verifying that everything is correct. And as soon as we've got a better handle on that, we will be giving you a lot more information as how many we've got in each town. And we will begin the, the process of trying to get these all registered, and, and making sure that they are actually short-term rentals. Any questions?
Dennis, go ahead.
Mike, what, what, why such a big increase? What's, what's going on?
You mean in the occupancy tax?
Yeah.
Alls I can tell you is that across the nation, everybody's numbers are up like this. And I think it because 2020, nobody could go anywhere, and in '21, they all just said, "I'm going." And I, everywhere I've been, I was in Florida, I had vacation, I was in Las Vegas for a little bit, and Hawaii, their numbers are through the roof also. I think it's just countrywide that this is happening.
So did you go to Hawaii on the county dollar?
No.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions for Mike? I see a hand.
Yes, I do.
Who's, who's the hand? I see a hand.
Brad McGowan.
Oh, Brad, sorry, I'll show you your hand. Go ahead.
Yes, it looks like you just got back from Hawaii with that shirt on, so. Hey, my question is, well, one to follow through. One of the reasons why, another reason why I think the, the money is the, the tracking has got so much better, and people are actually able to track down and collect more because we're getting more people register finding out that there weren't. And so it's, I mean, a combination of, of, you know, the increase of people traveling, but also the tracking of this information and, and coming down on people. My question is, is, you know, how are we making out with the people that aren't paying? Because I know of a few properties in Queensbury alone that we haven't been able to grab any money. I mean, how are we tracking down with that? And, and do we have a plan and process? And, you know, not as much as prosecuting, but collecting and finding them? And how far can we go back?
As far as going back, I mean, we try to go back as far as we can actually prove that they may have been renting without paying us the occupancy tax. But as far as chasing them down, we have a mailing list. We're trying to work on that. I just reached out to the county attorney's office sometime this week. I don't remember, Larry, what day it was. But, and we are reinstituting our process for collections. In other, because we notify when we get to a certain point, after so many letters and we get no response, we turn the information over to the county attorney's office, and they start legal proceedings. And we have just, since Larry has taken over, we have just started to work that back through the system again.
Okay, follow-up, please?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, Mike, thank you. I appreciate it. I mean, and this new company that we have that's tracking and finding all these people that supposedly have these Airbnbs that we, I, I think it's a good system that we have in the process. But I, I just want to, you know, make sure that we are following, doing our due diligently diligence to, to track these down, but also to, to collect this, because it seems to be a, becoming a big business in our area where people are just buying houses to, to rent out for the Airbnb, Airbnb's, you know? So.
Just to give you an idea, the, the download we're looking at had about 1,900 listings. All right, and we have 670 already registered. So there's still a lot more out there that we've got to chase.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, yes, sir?
Thank you. Yeah, Mike, a couple of things. I read recently that the state, as we know, short-term rentals don't pay sales tax. And that's often been one of the hoteliers' main concern, is it's not an even playing field where they charge, obviously have to charge sales tax and short-term rentals don't. And I recently read just a week ago about the state considering the process of charging sales tax to short-term rentals. Do you have any information on that, Mike, or?
Not really much more than what you have, supervisor. I have just heard through the grapevine and a couple of things from the County Treasurers Association that the state is looking at and, and will try to enforce collection of sales tax on the short-term rentals, which, I mean, is just going to benefit us if that happens, because then we'll get so a more, another percentage on what's actually being rented.
Right, okay. I didn't know if you had any update on that. Okay, you probably, you read probably the same article I did.
I did, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Chairman Mike Wild, if you don't mind.
Ed, Mike?
Hey, Michael. I've been listening to what you've been talking about with the oc-tax increase. And I'm curious, if it's across the board and across the country, should we consider this a one-year anomaly?
That would be my educated opinion. You know, I'm, I'm a great one for looking at trends. And if you look at where, and if you throw out '20 and '21, and you look at the trends, '22, we should be collecting about five and a half, maybe 5.8 million, look, based on the trends. So that's my opinion as to where 2022 would be. And I wouldn't bet on 2022 being as stellar as 2021 was.
All right, thanks, Mike.
So, Andre, I think I had your hand up?
Thank you. Just to be clear, you said 567,000 from short-term rentals. Is that number included in the 6.7 million you quoted, or is that in addition to?
No, that's included in the 6.7 million.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more hands. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you.
All right, well, now we'll get back into tourism, so I will turn our agenda over to Joanne.
Good morning. The first item on my agenda is to enter into an agreement with Famous Destination Marketing. Josiah Brown is here with us today. He has represented the county. We were just talking before the meeting for well over 10 years. And we contract with him. There's a one-year contract with the option to renew for an additional four years. Josiah is our, he's our feet on the ground around New York State, and he is going to present to us today what he has to offer. And I would like to contract with him for this year with options to renew for an additional three years. Josiah will come to the podium, and he has a presentation that Tammy will click through.
Good morning, everybody. Am I going to see the presentation on this screen, or?
You ready?
Yep. Thank you. While she's getting that going, I just, I just thank you for the time. I'm going to keep this brief. I know you have a long agenda and a long morning. It's great to be here in person. I travel about 50,000 miles a year across New York, so the, the snow doesn't scare me. But I got to get up here last night and enjoy the destination a little bit before the snow came in. So I want to just give you a quick background of who we are and what we do. I'm known in the industry as the New York Sherpa. And everybody's first question, if you want to go to the next slide, is, what the heck is a Sherpa? What the heck is a New York Sherpa? Well, if you go to the next slide, I'll show you, you have to be born a Sherpa. No, that's a terrifying slide, if you want to go to the next. I got that nickname. I have been working in promoting New York since 2003. And over the course of those years, I have done about 750,000 miles across New York State. It was originally my goal to see and do everything that the state had to offer, and I fell in love with the destinations and the communities and the people of New York State. And that gave birth in 2012 to a brand called New York's Best Experiences, which I'm going to kind of unpack what we do. New York's Best Experiences is a division of Famous Destination Marketing. I'm also just coming off of being the chair of the New York State Tourism Industry Association. I was the lucky guy to pull the short straw and get that, get that seat just before the pandemic broke loose. So I'm now the immediate past chair, thankfully, after that stint. And I'm on the Advocacy Committee for Destinations International, which is our international association largely focused in domestic attractions. But this, this moniker of the New York Sherpa stuck years ago. This nickname I was given because it has been my passion. If you know the Sherpas, they are the natives of Nepal who help you climb Mount Everest, and they are known as some of the most gracious tourism hosts in the world, and they also show you the way. And so when I kind of got that nickname, I ran with it, because I have wanted to be a host and a champion for what this state has to offer. If you could go to the next slide, please. I, I want to tell you, my whole business is built on two foundational principles. And that is that, I think we all know, probably something I shouldn't say in a county meeting, but I think we all know people don't travel just by county. But that is how we are funded, and that is how those revenues flow. So we have to give some spirited promotion to driving people to the county with those funds. But I, I at the core believe that people travel first by personal interest. You don't travel necessarily even by destination first. You travel by personal interest, so I believe that. But I also believe that recommendations tear down the wall of fear of trying something new. This is kind of why people sit on TripAdvisor at midnight and read, read reviews. They're trying to get somebody to tell them it's safe. So we made, next slide, we made our mission to win first-time visitors first to New York State, and then to win them to the regions. So if somebody has gone to, never has, has come to New York State, we would say, "We want them to come to New York State," and by talking to them in the language of personal interests, and then making recommendations for the places that are famous for what they love, we can win them to New York State. And then, once we've gotten them to New York State, we want to trade them around the region. So if they've gone to the Finger Lakes for 10 years, we want to bring them to the Adirondacks. If they've come to the Adirondacks for 10 years, we tell them to stay in the Adirondacks. So we want to trade them around the regions of New York. And so that became our mission, simple mission to win first-time visitors, complicated execution of that. Next slide, please. So we built something that there is really no comparison to. We decided to build a project, a brand called New York's Best Experiences, which is essentially a co-op for up to 15 destinations in New York. There is criteria. The destination needs to be famous. They need to really have a brand that we can carry. There has to be a brand that we can passionately speak about. And we invited 15 destinations back in 2012 to be a part of this idea of New York's Best Experiences, what kind of traveler are you? And the whole program would be narrate, narrated by the New York Sherpa, who, we've made the New York Sherpa kind of the Geico Gecko of our brand. And yes, it is weird even for me to be referring to myself in the third person, but I think you, you get the idea. So, next slide, please. So the first thing that we did, we wrapped a truck. We wrapped the Sherpa Mobile. This is me out there capturing my Christmas tree for the year. You'll notice those two beautiful boats on the driver door and the driver-side passenger door. We wrapped our Sherpa Mobile with scenes of New York, if you go to the next slide. We crap, grabbed a little snapshot after we got to, so we came up to do some social media content for Ice Castles. So we got to bring the Sherpa home to, to Lake George. So you're on the doors there. We wrapped the vehicle as a big center place of the, a center point of the events that we go to. Next slide. And then we built a mobile visitor center that deploys indoors and outdoors. And the goal here, since we were repping destinations and being a personal voice of recommendation for them, is to attract the public based on our philosophy. So you'll notice the largest message in our booth are things, not places, because people think about things first. So they see hiking, or biking, or fishing, or paddling, and they come into the booth, and then we bring them to a destination, and we pick up the travel guide, and we talk to them about that destination, and we make recommendations for them. And every time, our recommendations are different based on what they tell us that they love. You can go to the next slide. You see that it becomes a very, it's kind of maudst to aflame with the orange. That's our brand. And we've partnered with these destinations. Next slide, please. Right along that road, we also built a travel guide for these destinations that again fits our philosophy. So on one side, it's destinations, and the top things to do there, and the voice of the Sherpa. And if you flip it, it becomes the same content, but now sorted by personal interest. And it's amazing, we just, we distribute the guide on both sides, and it's amazing to see the piles go down about equally, whether somebody thinks destinations or they think personal interests. Next slide, please. So we've gotten to go to some very cool, we've done this since 2012. As the latest campaign of New York's Best Experiences, we did many things before then for the county as well. But we've gotten to go to some neat places, Grand Central Terminal, and the Hall of Fame induction and air shows. We've been invited to some very neat places. And mostly, our message was being conveyed out on the road as a tour. Being that human connection. We believe in social media and digital marketing. We believe in television and radio and print. We believe in these things, but we wanted to be the voice that was actually still bridging that human connection and going out and talking to real people. Every time I go back to a hotel after a travel show, I know that I've talked to over 100 or 200 real people, just myself. I talk to about 10,000 people a year, in addition to what our team talks about. So, next slide, please. We go to street fairs and events all over the East Coast, not just New York. We go from about Long Island to Philly, all the way around to Boston. Next slide. And thank you for advancing these for me. So during the pandemic, we couldn't be on the road, so what did we do? We started a show online called the What's Open Sherpa Tour, where we went around the state and showed people that things were open and what the rules were. We did an episode here in Lake George, and on the mini-haha, and we actually met a couple. They were in their late 60s, and they were from, they had always gone to Vermont. For 50 years, they had gone to Vermont. They had never been to Lake George until the travel restrictions made it so that they can only travel in New York State. And they said, "We cannot believe the gem that this is. We will be back here every year. We're embarrassed. We're in our late 60s, and we've never been here," when we were at the state's neighbor. And that's the type of connection we love, because we've made those connections for years before the pandemic kind of helped us with that a little bit. Next slide, please. So in addition, we launched a show called the New York Sherpa Show. So now, many people in our booth said, "I just wish you had a show to talk about some of this." So we did start to venture into the digital world, and we build these shows based on the destinations that are in our co-op. And we push these mainly on Facebook. They're also put on Instagram and YouTube. But we put a whole campaign behind each episode on Facebook. Next slide, please. And then we are also getting into the, the website game. We were not a website-focused company, but we are beginning to bring our recommendations online to make sure that they're housed on the web. Again, we had put so much investment into the humans on the road, but when the pandemic kind of took us off the road, it was harder to do that. And so on our website, we still greet people with the message, "What kind of traveler are you?" And we're in the process of rebuilding all of these destination profiles now. Next slide, please. So that is, in a nutshell, what we do. We really believe that humans are still the best app. I'm a big believer in apps and digital marketing. But we go out on the road and we talk to people, and we offer third-party credibility. One of the main things that we will hear is people will say, "Is it actually?" And then they will fill in what they understand of a brand. They'll say, "Is it actually?" And we're able to be that third-party credibility. We're able to be a big part of brand awareness. You know, obviously, we just saw the Olympics. And when you see the major sponsors of the Olympics, Coca-Cola is not looking to sell cans from that logo. They are looking for brand awareness. And we know that our major battle, when we're saying we're from New York, and somebody in Philly might think, "I mean, New York City." Our main battle is to showcase the brands that are in New York as it relates to a brand like Lake George is so powerful. We want to remind people of it, and we know we're going to be a little sliver of a marketing pie, but it's an important human part of that pie. Next slide, please. So how are we performing? How do we measure? Certainly, as we're building more digital tools, we have some more metrics to start to display. But the main thing that we're watching, this happens constantly on the road, if you go to the next slide. This phrase has become one of the most proud things, is that we hear this phrase constantly in our booth. "Oh, Lake George. I haven't been there since I was a kid," or "I haven't been there in years." When we're in Boston, or Philly, or Hartford, or Long Island, we hear this constantly, particularly Lake George. It's Lake George and Niagara Falls we hear this phrase on. And that is really for us showcasing that we are bringing that brand back to people in these destinations. Next slide, please. And then also, most destinations value the human connection, but they cannot lift the budget now to get to all of these events. We go to events that would cost the county about $60,000 to staff them themselves, in addition to all of the other deliverables that we're kind of putting on there as value-add. We talk in terms of live impressions. When I'm at the New York Travel Show and 30,000 people walk past our booth, that is 30,000 impressions that have been made on those displays that say Lake George or Niagara Falls. And I speak in those terms, because sometimes we look at an impression on a banner ad as valuable, but we don't look at the impression on that board from a human equally. So we're trying to bring that human connection. And then we also are distributing 3,000 to 4,000 guides right into the hand of a consumer. We know they're putting it right in their hand. So, next slide, please. That is a little bit of the impact of what we're doing. This is the events that we're going to this year. Pending all of them solidifying, we've had to jockey a few events, but you'll notice the New York Travel Show, and even the Philadelphia Flower Show. The booth at the Philadelphia Flower Show alone is $15,000. Most destinations can't touch it, but it's an incredible audience. So we're able to work this co-op that way, and we're doing the Denver Travel Show this year as well. We like to add one long-haul show per year to just extend the brand of these partners. So there really, there really isn't anything like this, and we have been really proud to build it this way and convey these brands. And I think the last slide, one of the new things that we're doing, we've decided to give away the Sherpa's gear. So my UTV, my electric bike, my, my giveaways, my swag. At the events this year, we're asking people to sign up for the Sherpa's Where to Go Next newsletter. This will be at events and on social media. We're building this campaign. For everyone that signs up for our newsletter this year, they're going to be entered to win some really good grand prizes and monthly prizes. And this is a way, again, we're going to begin to expand our digital footprint. So that's the, the work that we're involved in. I, I wear two hats. I do a lot of destination consulting in the industry. That takes up about 30% of my time, but really, the work I'm very proud of is being able to lead this team at New York's Best Experiences to go out and really tell the stories of the state that I just fell in love with back in 2003 and '04, when I was traveling the state and working with destinations for kind of travel guides and things like that. I really fell in love with who the people were and what the experiences were. So I've worn, worn that name, the New York Sherpa proudly. Next slide, please. You can follow my journeys on Instagram at the New York Sherpa, and you can follow us on Instagram or Facebook at New York's Best Experiences. And I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much for the time.
All right, anyone have any questions for Josh? I don't see any hands up there. All right, Josh.
Everyone, could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Do you have a listing or something more specific of the services that you provide that could be incorporated into a potential resolution or contract, if the committee makes that determination?
Yes, we have kind of a bulleted proposal for Joanne of everything that we would be doing. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josh. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Keep working, doing the good job you're doing now.
I left a couple of my cards up here on the counter, if anyone wants to grab one on the way out. But thank you so much for the time, and thank you for the partnership that you've had.
Gene? Yes, sir. Dennis, yes?
I, I have a question. How much is this contract?
$19,500.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Andrea, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Joanne. You said that we've had a, a contract with renewals. Are we at the beginning of another contract now? Is that?
That is correct. We've just finished, it was one year with options to renew. So in order to, this would be a new contract at this point in time.
Okay, according to our procurement policy, does it require us to get three other quotes for this kind of thing?
Well, I did go back and forth with Julie Butler on this a little bit, and we genuinely believe that there is not another service like this in New York State. And if the meeting, if this meeting was on Tuesday, Julie would have been able to attend, but we would approach this as a sole source, as there is not anything like this in New York State that I could come up with two other bids on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? All right, thank you, all. Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you for Josiah for taking the time to drive and be here in person today.
All right, so we need, yeah, we need a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Strau, and somebody second it? Ms. Runyon, okay, thank you very much. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Posed? Passed. All right, move on, Joanne.
Claudia had a question.
I'm sorry. Claudia, were you trying to raise your hand? You have to yell out, because I can't see that far over there.
That's okay, Chairman, thank you. I was just going to ask that the bulleted list of services that he mentioned be provided out to the committee, if it wasn't already. I may have missed that. Thank you. Thanks, Chairman.
It's in the agenda, okay.
There are a couple of attachments with the agenda, but I, I know that I have another list that I can send.
The only thing that I have is our, the, your report. I don't, I don't see.
Book didn't have any other attachments, so maybe there was an issue when the email went out. I only had two pages in, for this. Okay, super, so thank you for clarifying that.
Sorry about that, if everyone does not have the complete agenda, the, the copies that we brought up to the board meeting.
Well, I think everyone received the agenda. I did. It's just the attachments that were with it that may not have come through.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get them out to the board. We have them here. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Claudia.
Okay, so the next couple of items on my agenda are personnel-related. The first is the notice of intent to fill a vacant position in the department. This position is the notice of intent to fill a vacant position in the department. This position has been vacant since late 2020. I was asked in 2021 not to fill the position and wait to see how the tourism economy rebounded, which it has. But in the meantime, the job responsibilities have fallen to others in the department, primarily Casey, but Tanya and Paul have helped with this position as well. But there are many things that are just not happening because I do have this vacant position in the office. So this individual communications would be primarily responsible for all of the copywriting that goes on in the department. So that's our website, copy on ads that we place, our travel guide. And we've been refreshing content that we have now, but there comes a point when you really need new content. So as we get ready to launch a new website and produce a new travel guide, we really need this copywriter on board. This individual would also work with Casey on social media. And I did outline a number of things on that reso request form that that individual would do. So what happened here is last year during the budget process, I did bring this to the Budget Committee. And when I reported back to the committee in September, I made that presentation, but I didn't get all of the proper sign-offs. So the money is in the budget right now for this position. And I would ask the committee to approve the intent to fill so that we can go ahead and get someone back on board and bring us back up to full speed within the department.
Mrs. Dickinson?
Joanne, what position is this? Who left?
Eric Fow was our communications person back for several years, three or four years, and he moved on. We did hire Casey O'Brien, who is also a communications assistant, and she's been with us for about three years. I did move Casey up into Eric's position because she's done a phenomenal job and I didn't want to lose her. So we are actually backfilling the entry-level position. So Eric was a specialist. Casey was an assistant. Casey moved up to specialist, and now I'd like to backfill the entry-level position.
Joanne, how many people do you have in your department?
I have seven full-time and Maggie's part-time.
Seven? Is this going to be the seventh or the eighth?
This would be eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mike.
Mike?
It's Mike. Yeah, I'm sorry. Question for Joanne. Joanne, can you be more specific about what this additional person will be doing? I don't know if you heard prior, but Mike was, Mike Swan was talking about the one-year windfall that we had with Octax. And I just want to make sure that we're spending money appropriately. And this is a long-term commitment. So could you just give me some more details about what's not being done?
The number one thing is copywriting. So Eric wrote, I would say, up to 100 articles for us, blog stories. He was out in the community. He would say, hey, Joanne, I'm going to this event. I'm going to that town. I'm going down to Glen Falls for a couple of days, and I'm going to come back with copy and stories and articles that we can post on our website. We can place in our travel guide. When they're on our website, Casey shares them on social media. They could become native stories on social media. So people read it on social. They click back to our website. They read the article, but then they continue to click around the website. So I have not had much new content in the last two years. I may have written something. Paul Tackett wrote an article here or there. Don Lehman has written a little bit of fishing for us, but it's kind of hit or miss. And again, we have refreshed content that we have to kind of, you know, update it or spice it up a little bit, but it's not new content. And people are looking for engaging content. And we find that when we do post any of these articles or stories online or on social, I can go to Google Analytics and I can see that people are spending two or three minutes reading these articles. So that's important to me. He would also, this, excuse me, not he, this new individual would also be working on social media with Casey. Primarily, Eric was responsible for Facebook. Casey came in and undertook Twitter and Instagram, and now she started some TikTok. But with Eric gone, she is almost entirely social media in addition to her photography skills. But there are some aspects of that social media placement. So I'd like to post events that are happening in the county on Facebook. Let that event organizer know, we're going to post your event. We're going to put a couple of dollars behind it. If there are any messaging you'd like us to have behind that post and get some input from them. But that correspondence or that communication back and forth with each of those individual event organizers has fallen by the wayside. Not entirely, but we just don't have the bandwidth to keep that communication up for the many hundreds of events that we post. So I'd like to keep that line of communication open so that our events and our businesses and our visitors know that we're out there all of the time. Just keep that line of communication open and report back to them and say, hey, I posted about the Smokey Deer Jamboree or something going on up in Stony Creek. And we had so much engagement and we had questions and we had people click on the video to watch it. So that means a lot to all of these events in these small towns who may not have the dollars or the bandwidth to be engaging on social community. We fill that gap. We're about to launch a new website. All of the content and the text on that website will carry over from the old site, but that's four or five years old now. So that all needs to be refreshed. Those are just a few examples. But I feel like.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Joanne. I get it. Just one more question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Joanne, is there any way that we can contract this out instead of adding a full-time employee and maybe save some money?
Yeah. If that's the wish of the committee, it's an entry-level position. It would help me to have that individual be in the department and work together with the rest of our staff. There's a communication and relationship within the department that I think benefits the quality of work that comes out of this. We did have a contract with Trampoline a number of years ago to do social media. It was $40,000, and that was six or seven years ago. So the position that I'd like to add, I'll look back here, but I think it's $39,000 or the high 30s.
Okay. Thank you. I have reservations. I'd like to see this work through a contract. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Andrea?
Thank you. Joanne, is this position reflected in the $692,000 that you say covers staff? Or would this be in addition to that?
It is already included in that. I did go through the budget process and have it approved last year, so it's included in that figure. Thank you.
Andrea? Oh, no, that's.
It's Claudia.
Oh, it's Claudia. I'm sorry, Claudia.
That's okay. I know you said you can't see us over here. Joanne, for the $39,000, what are the minimum qualifications for this person's background?
Let me see if I have the job description with me. I do believe it's a bachelor's degree with some experience.
Is there a way to change that, or does that have to go through Trish? I'm thinking, you know, someone with those skills may not necessarily have needed a bachelor's.
I'm sorry, I don't have the job description with me, but anything, anything, any part of the job description does have to go through Trish. And I did run this through her when we, actually, we had two positions in the department that were tourism specialists, and they were very clerical. And when those two individuals left, we changed the titles to communications because I needed something more specific. So I had to create the job description with Trish. So I would need to go back and revisit any changes there.
Can I just follow? I'm just thinking, Joanne, there are a lot of young people with skills that you're looking for that may not necessarily have gotten a bachelor's degree. They may have associates or some other type of credentials that would fill this position. But I am supportive of it, so I don't want to slow it down. But maybe you could go back to Trish and see if it could be broadened.
Again, I don't have the job description in front of me. Often, it will say associate's degree with a certain number of years' experience. If Lisa is listening to this, maybe she could find the job description and bring it up to me. I just don't have it in front of me right now.
All right. Want to wait till Lisa bring them up, or want to move for the resolution?
If I have support, I would move forward. If that's a sticking point, then send Lisa a message and ask her to.
All right. Well, we'll just skip this one here and see if we can get that information for you from Lisa downstairs before we make a motion to move on it.
The next position, the next item on my agenda does, in fact, include Lisa. Lisa would like to retire at the end of March, but she would like to work within the department on a per diem basis. She's been with the department for many years and knows the job and its responsibilities well. And she was instrumental in working with me as I transitioned when Kate left. She knows all of the ins and outs of the financial dealings of the department. When Kristin came on board last year, initially, Lisa was responsible for all of the occupancy tax special event applications and scheduling for people to come to the committee meetings and making presentations, and worked very closely with Supervisor Dickinson on all things occupancy tax. Since Kristin Hannafin has come on board, Kristin has been working closely with Lisa, but doing some of those responsibilities. So to that end, Lisa feels that she would be able to take care of her tourism department financial responsibilities on a part-time basis. So she would like to retire. And actually, the verbiage is per diem. She would like to work per diem within the department for the foreseeable future. So I would like to create that per diem position. That would be part one, and part two would be to fill that position with Lisa Grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'll bring her to the floor.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on it? Mr. Strau?
Yeah, Joanne, Lisa's retiring March 31st, the end of the forthcoming month, which is pretty soon. This person, and this is part of your succession program, right, that somebody will need to replace Lisa, even though Lisa's coming back part-time? Yes or no?
We will not fill the full-time position. I would, I think the verbiage is I would ask to defund the full-time position, but not fill it, not fill that. So I won't have two financial people in the department.
Eventually, Lisa's going to really be there.
Excuse me. John, can you pull the mic forward?
And we will need somebody to replace her.
Correct.
Would this person be perhaps that person? Or no?
Which person? I don't know which person.
Lisa's job, which is basically doing the tourism budget.
Yes.
Do we have a succession plan for that? So that when Lisa really leaves entirely, we do have somebody trained and ready to go to take her place?
I would not have someone in that position right now. I would just have Lisa working on that part-time per diem basis. And when I asked Lisa how long she thought she wanted to do that, she said indefinitely. She enjoys her job and she would like to continue for the foreseeable future. So it could be years from now before we would need a full-time principal account clerk.
All right. I didn't know that. That's actually good news. Thank you.
Gene?
Yes, Dennis?
I don't know if anybody's seconding that motion, but I'd like to second it.
Well, could, I don't, I didn't hear anybody move it, but I'd like to move C and D together.
Well, Mr. Leggett brought it forward.
Oh, he did. Well, can we do those together?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do both.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay. Dennis, you all right with that?
Yes.
You all right with that? Okay. C and D will move together. So I got the motion. All in favor?
You didn't give me a chance to jump in there, Chairman. This is Claudia again.
Like to see you now. Go ahead.
Thank you. Joanne, I thought I caught you say something about that Kristin was taking on some of the responsibilities of Lisa's other duties. Are we looking at changing Kristin's job description or her salary? Is there anything being revised at this time related to that?
Well, when Krist, when the Tourism Development and Events Coordinator position was created a year ago, within that job description was very specifically working with these event organizers. So Kristin is, I think, working along with her job description. So she did, I mean, you know, we all saw her come to committee with the revised applications for the municipal and the special events. But the next part of that was bringing all of the applications in, reviewing them, creating the summaries. I think that Kristin is working within her job description right now. It just became more apparent as the year progressed. And Lisa and Kristin did work together, but some of that application process in particular that was so time-consuming to Lisa was now being done by Kristin. Does that answer the question?
That answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
All right. So.
And I'm in favor.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mike. Two questions. Joanne, what's the net cost of this move? Is Lisa going to be basically earning the same amount of money as she was when she was a full-time employee?
When, as a full-time employee, let me just turn the page to the reso request form. She will come in at the same grade. So the hourly rate, excuse, hourly rate is $24.76. But as a retiree working for Warren County, her max, the max amount she could earn is $35,000. Her current salary is $51,518. She may not earn up to the entire $35,000. You know, she would be here more often during budget season or, you know, when audits had to be done. But if there were a few in a row where she didn't need to be here, that would be the beauty of the per diem. She could come in when we need her, and we would just pay her at that hourly rate. So yes.
That's, yeah, that definitely answers my question. And I do have one other. It has to do with Kristin. And I recall last year when this position, her position was created, it was going to be evaluated this year because it was sold to us that it was this position and her work was going to essentially pay for itself. So there has to be some economic review of her role and what she's done, at least in my mind, based on what we decided last year. When is that due to happen?
I'm not aware of when that will happen, perhaps with the department head review filling, but I do not know that.
But you do, you do recall that we did that last year, right?
I do recall that discussion.
She didn't, okay.
I think she started in March or April of last year, so we're approaching that one-year point.
Okay. Well, I'll look forward to that in the next month or so. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Can we move ahead now with that resolution? We've got a resolution and a second. All in favor? All right. Can we move ahead now with that resolution? We've got a resolution and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. All right. Now we're going to jump back up.
I have the job description. Okay. If we can jump back up to the Communications Assistant, there are two options for minimum qualifications. It could be a bachelor's degree with one year of full-time experience, or it could be an associate's degree with three years of full-time experience, which would be more entry level.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on that position?
I need a motion.
We need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Who, who my, who made the motion? Leggett. Yes, sir. Thank you. You got a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Runyon. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? None?
Mike, I'm opposed.
Okay. One opposed. Move on. That resolution passed. Okay. Move on. Okay. So we're in a, a part, we, we were asking for an executive session. Do you want to read one or you want?
I'm requesting an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person subject, subject to one, section 105, 1F of the Public Officers Law.
Is that all right, Mr. Attorney, the way we said it? Okay.
Perfect.
I'm in motion to move into executive session.
So moves.
Dickinson, who seconded? All right. Mr. Straugh seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're in the.